So now we have the public hearing with experts and representatives of the stakeholders on improving the accountability of the European Central Bank. So I would like to welcome all the participants to this hearing, the invited speakers, the members of parliament and the broader public, since the meeting is web-streamed. Today's meeting will be organized as follows. In each of the two panels, after a short introduction of the chair, there will be a speakers round with an intervention of 10 minutes each. This will be followed by three questions and answer rounds. Each econ member will have two minutes per question. Please indicate who of the panelists you wish to ask the question. After each question round, panelists will have to share five to six minutes to answer. I ask you all to strictly respect the time given to you. And so please be aware that phone intervention or only audio connection will not be interpreted. So Panel One concerns the accountability concerning the impact of ECB policies in the euro area. So first of all, let me welcome our two speakers of this first panel, Jean-Claude Trichet, former president of the European Central Bank, and Rosa Lastra, professor of Queen Mary University of London. The purpose of this first panel of the hearing is to discuss on the accountability concerning the impact of ECB policies in the euro area. It's particularly important that this debate is taking place in the European Parliament and in particular in the Committee Economic and Monetary Affairs, the place where nowadays virtually but monetary dialogues take place. The ECB is accountable to the European Parliament for its monetary policy tasks. As committee, we have always taken very seriously our responsibility in scrutinizing ECB decisions in the area of monetary policy through many tools, including our monetary dialogue, questions to the ECB, studies in line with legal and institutional framework laid down in the treaties. The accountability of the ECB towards the Parliament plays a key role in light of the importance of the euro and of the single market, which are the core of the European integration, but also the key element of any economic perspective for the European Union on the global stage. In light of the very distinguished panel of today, I will immediately give the floor to our guests. I will start the speakers round and give the floor for 10 minutes each, starting from Jean-Claude Trichet.
Je Trichet, on vous entend pas. Est-ce que vous voulez allumer votre micro, s'il vous plaît? On va faire une reflechie de votre connexion un petit instant.
J'ai le speaker.
Okay, vous. On vous entend très bien.
Madame la présidente, Mrs. Chair, dear members of Econ Committee, ladies and gentlemen, today I appear before your committee with particular emotion. I am with you, as matter of fact, for the 36th time after 35 meetings during my eight terms of president. As I told the European Parliament recently, in January 2019, plenary, in the occasion of the celebration of the 20th anniversary of the euro, it was always, as you said, Mrs. Chair, in the European Parliament and particularly in econ meetings, that I could find the best support and the ECB had to observe the most impressive dedication to our historic European endeavor in the five years of crisis, namely from 2007 up to 2011, when I was president. Your decision to organize a public hearing on improving the accountability of the ECB is important. I read with great interest the studies, very stimulating and interesting studies produced at your request. You possess with these works a very, very impressive multi-ocular and multi-dimensional vision of the issue. I would like first to say a word, you will not be surprised, on the central bank independence. As we know, the Maastricht Treaty affirms with particular stress the independence of the ECB. I quote the treaty, neither the ECB nor a national central bank nor any member of their decision-making bodies shall seek or take instructions from, I would say, anybody's, any government, any institutions. In a democracy, full independence means necessarily and simultaneously exposed accountability. The full independence of any institution in our democratic society does not stand on its own. An independent institution refusing to be accountable to society will not enjoy the trust of society and will not obviously achieve independence. And so I would say that the appropriate way to preserve and enhance accountability is to apply the principle of transparency. In the case of the ECB and the ESCB, it means exploit all possible channels of dialogue and communications that exist. Among these channels, the most important by far is certainly the accountability vis-à-vis the representative of the European people, yourselves, the members of the European Parliament elected by universal suffrage. It comprehens the annual report of the ECB to Parliament, the ECB feedback on the EP annual resolution on this report, the response letter to the MPs, and what is for me the most important, the hearings at the European Parliament through the Econ Committee. Let me mention the other channels. They are naturally not as decisive as the relationship with the Parliament in terms of democratic accountability, but they are really complementing it. A confine of them, firstly, the President of the Eurogroup, as well as the Commissioner, are invited to all meetings of the ECB Governing Council. Secondly, the President of the ECB is invited to all meetings of the Eurogroup. Thirdly, since the crisis erupted 10 years ago, the President of the ECB is invited to the European Council meetings. Fourthly, the President gives a press conference immediately after monetary policy meetings. And finally, and it was very much at your request, Mrs. Chair, the ECB publishes the monetary policy accounts a few weeks after the meetings. Also to be mentioned are the relationship of the national central banks with the national institutions, governments and parliaments. These channels of accountability are also key in the context of the federal structure of the ECB and the complexity of the emergent European public space. In normal times, in my opinion, the ECB should not have direct relationships with national parliaments. The ECB as a European institution is accountable only to the European Parliament, to yourself. Only in highly exceptional times, as a courtesy to the national parliament concern, the ECB can, in my opinion, engage in such exchange of views. Last but not least, the ECB has direct communication with the large public through participation in colloquium, articles, public speeches, and recently, in the occasion of the strategic review, the ECB listens events that are organized now all over the euro area. Finally, I would say on the accountability vis-à-vis the European Parliament, it goes without saying that the exclusive responsibility of organizing your meetings is the responsibility of the Chair and the members of Econ. Still, having had so many dialogues with you over time, I feel encouraged to mention three suggestions made by the experts. Allow more time to the dialogue, possibly have an ex ante agreement to give a fewer number of members of MPs to ask questions that are of the essence, in the view of the committee, and finally encourage a more dynamic question. I will also echo the many suggestions which were made, that the treaty should be modified for the European Parliament to have the right of approval of the appointment of the President and the members of the Executive Board of the ECB, as is the case in the US Senate, for equivalent appointments. It is clearly an important and open issue, depending on the progress the European Union can make on its historical endeavor towards political union. I would say personally, I attach enormous importance to completing political union. As part of it, I would be today in favor of giving this approval responsibility to the European Parliament, as well as I called in 2012 for giving always the last word to the Parliament in case a country, member of the euro area disagrees with the recommendations of the European institutions. As you might know, I also called in 2011 for creating a Minister of Economy for the euro area. Now, on the accountability of the ECB, depending on the overall different channels that you could exploit, I see four main issues that could strive to further elucidate and improve the accountability. The distributional effects of monetary policy, the question of the secondary objectives, the question of the present defects of the real economy of the advanced countries, and also the strategy review already mentioned. These are very important issue in the present period because, first, we have now important purchases of tradable securities to avoid the materialization of the deflationary risk; secondly, because we have very low price increases which are obtained on a long-standing basis, and therefore the reflection on secondary objectives seems to me more timely; and third, that we had a pandemic and pre-pandemic real economy situation which was unsustainable in the long run and probably calls for major reforms. On distributional effects of monetary policy, these effects are always present, whatever measures are taken by the central banks, even decrease or increase of interest rates have distributional consequences, as well as the purchase of tradable securities. So to the extent that they are all commanded by the primary mandate of the ECB to deliver price stability, these measures are, in my view, necessary to protect our fellow citizens against the risk of inflation or deflation, and they are particularly necessary in the present period to protect the most vulnerable, the poorest, the young people and the unemployed in our societies against the hardship of the materialization of these risks. So even if it seems to me that they are justified, that being said, of course, the ECB is working on analyzing distributional effects of its policies, and your questions, your remarks in that field would be, in my opinion, very important. Second, as regards the secondary objectives, the ECB is now working on what was mentioned as particularly important in the eyes of the ECB and of the President of the ECB, namely the issue of green transition and the contribution that the ECB can do in this domain, both, I would say, to facilitate the transition and to avoid the consequences of inadequate preparation of the economy as a whole. The intention of the ECB is presently to examine green changes in exploring every avenue available in order to combat time and change. It's a very complex issue with multiple dimensions. I would mention preserving the full effectiveness of monetary policy, making the difference between monetary policy instruments, collateral rules, securities purchases, and investment decisions that are dealing with allocation of own funds of the ECB and of the European system of central banks. And also, I have to say, part of it, perhaps introducing other criteria that environment according to the widely now communicated ESG concept, environment, social and governance. And all this, in my opinion, is certainly a case for further communication and discussion with Econ and with the members of parliament. The third dealing is the additional behavior of advanced economy, not only after the pandemic but before the pandemic, because we had very abnormal functioning. I only mentioned low interest rates, real interest rate, very low inflation, very low abnormal, low growth potential and so forth. So this is part of the major difficulty we have in all advanced economies, and it seems to me that the ECB is, as other central banks, extremely appropriate, of course, to discuss with the Econ Committee the grid of analysis of these defects in the real economy functioning and of the structural reforms, recommendations to European institutions and governments. And of course, the strategic review is the last point I will stress as very, very important. The ECB has decided to engage in a strategic review of its policy 16 years after the last review. The ECB has said the President will consult with the European Parliament. I would draw your attention on the fact that it is extremely important because it is a decisive issue which will normally command the medium and long-term future of the ECB monetary policy. Mrs. Chair, dear members of the Econ Committee, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your speech and your suggestions. So now I give the floor to Professor Rosa Lastra from Queen Mary University of London for her 10-minute speech.
Good afternoon, honorable Chair and members of the European Parliament. Many thanks for giving me the opportunity to present my views in this public hearing. My remarks are based on a report I wrote on this topic at the request of Econ in preparation for the September 2020 monetary dialogue. Both in these remarks and in my paper, I focus on the monetary function of the ECB, leaving aside its supervisory responsibilities. Next slide. Why do we need to revisit the accountability of the ECB now? First, because the growing impact of the ECB in response to the global financial crisis and to the pandemic has changed the traditional understanding of monetary policy. In the course of 2020, the ECB has adopted an unprecedented package of monetary policy measures to address the fallout of the COVID-19 crisis. Secondly, we need to revisit the accountability of the ECB now because of the legal ramifications of the decision of the German Constitutional Court of May, fifth, 2020, which called for the reaffirmation and enhancement of the appropriate level of scrutiny of monetary policy in the euro area, which is at the European level. Thirdly, because effective parliamentary scrutiny becomes ever more important and challenging given the distributional and other effects of monetary policy operations, as well as the growing complexity of central bank monetary responsibilities. Compared with other central banks in the world, the ECB is a relatively young central bank. It is also sui generis in that, one, it was created by a treaty, which is the source of its legitimacy, as sovereign states voluntarily transfer monetary policy powers to the supranational arena; two, because it is the central bank of the eurozone, which is a jurisdictional area without legal personality. The legal personality resides in the European Union, according to Article 47 of the Treaty of the European Union, not in the eurozone; and three, it is sui generis because it has no European fiscal counterpart, in the sense that there is, at least not yet, a euro treasury or Eurominister of Finance. The fiscal counterparts remain national. The jurisdictional complexity that the ECB confronts in the discharge of its monetary policy responsibilities is not faced by the Bank of England in the UK, nor by the federal resister system in the US. This explains the strong protection of independence that was granted to the ECB by Article 130 of the Treaty for the Functioning of the European Union, which was quoted by Monsieur Trichet. A protection which is stronger than that afforded to other central banks around the world with statutory independence, whereby one statute may be removed by another. But in a democratic system governed by the rule of law, independence is only one side of the coin. Since 1992, I have advocated the need for accountable independence of the ESCB in an article that I published in the Harvard International Law Journal at that time. An independent central bank is constrained by the goal or objectives and by the demands of democratic legitimacy and accountability. Next slide. The primary mandate of the ECB is price stability, according to Article 127.1 of the Treaty for the Functioning of the European Union. When the ECB was created, it was influenced by the Bundes-
We have had a connection problem with Professor Lastra. We will try to reconnect.
You can speak. You can speak.
The primary mandate of the ECB is price stability, according to Article 127.1 of the Treaty for the Functioning of the European Union. When the ECB was created, it was influenced by the Bundesbank model of stability and independence, in line with the Timbergen Rule: one agency, one objective, one policy instrument. The Bundesbank law contained few provisions regarding the accountability of the central bank, relying instead on the support of public opinion and the statutory objective to legitimize its existence in a democratic society. This contributes to explaining, in my opinion, why accountability may have only played a subsidiary role in the negotiations that led to the establishment of the ECB and ESCB. Notwithstanding the primacy of price stability, the ECB is also mandated to support the general economic policies of the Union, which include employment and growth, but also climate change and the quality of the environment, bearing in mind the broader goals of sustainability and solidarity, in accordance with Article 127.1 of the Treaty for the Functioning of the European Union and Article 3 of the Treaty of the European Union. By the way, in terms of green finance, the ECB should not engage in selective credit allocation, favoring some industries and companies over others. While it is easier to hold the ECB to account in the performance of its primary objective of price stability, when it comes to the secondary objectives, because of their genetic nature, it is more difficult. Accountability is facilitated when there is one goal rather than multiple goals, and when that goal is narrowly defined rather than formulated in broad terms. But given the important role that the ECB can play in reducing the economic and financial risks arising from unsustainable activity as a result of climate change, financial crisis or pandemics like COVID-19, the monetary dialogue and other mechanisms of accountability must be enhanced to respond to these challenges in the discharge of the ECB's secondary objectives. Importantly, the ECB also contributes to financial stability in accordance with Article 127.5 of the Treaty for the Functioning of the European Union. Next slide. In order to assess how the accountability of the ECB in the conduct of monetary policy can be improved, we must assess the current accountability challenges. The accountability of the ECB is diversified in line with the traditional articulation of accountability, trias politica. First and foremost, the ECB is accountable to the European Parliament, according to Article 284 of the Treaty for the Functioning of the European Union. Secondly, the ECB is subject to judicial review by the Court of Justice of the European Union, which is the only court that can judge the legality of the acts and decisions of the ECB. Thirdly, the ECB is subject to audit control, external and internal, and finally, there are also mechanisms of accountability vis-à-vis the Council and the Commission. The cooperation with the executive, the third branch in the trias politica, is sui generis, given the fact that responsibility for monetary policy was centralized while responsibility for fiscal policy remains a national competence. Finally, the ECB is also accountable to the public and must be transparent in its communication. Next slide. The adequate locus of accountability for the ECB regarding the conduct of its monetary policy responsibility is at the European level, not at the national level, and therefore it is in front of the European Parliament and not national parliaments. Monetary policy is an exclusive competence conferred upon the ECB by the treaty. There has been a transfer of sovereign monetary powers from the national to the supranational arena, and as stated earlier, judicial review is the exclusive responsibility of the Court of Justice of the European Union. I fully agree with former ECB President Monsieur Trichet that the exchange of views with national parliaments are not an obligation, not even a soft obligation, but just a matter of courtesy. Next slide, ways to improve the accountability of the ECB. First, in my opinion, the monetary dialogue should be renamed as monetary hearings to reflect the need for enhanced oversight. By renaming them as hearings, they would be treated less as a lecture or a statement by the ECB President to the members of parliament, and more as an opportunity to explain and justify the actions and decisions taken. Hearings are particularly important when the central bank navigates through a crisis, such as the global financial crisis and COVID-19, because crises give rise to extraordinary measures, making the scrutiny of monetary policy by the European Parliament ever more necessary, but also ever more complex. There must be adequate deliberation, and the ECB must explain and justify, as it fits the nature of accountability, in front of the members of the European Parliament, how it evaluates the effectiveness of its monetary policy operations and how it balances its primary and secondary objectives, in accordance with the treaty. I also second and support establishment of a euro-area specialized subcommittee to scrutinize monetary policy. Size is an important consideration. Back in 1997, in the context of an inquiry into the accountability of the Bank of England, I proposed that the House of Commons Trustee Committee should create a subcommittee with the specific role of monitoring the Bank of England, and suggested that it be chaired by a member of the opposition, not of the ruling party. The issue of technical expertise and adequate resources, though essential to hold an independent central bank to account, can be a double-edged sword as politicians as well as judges need not be trained in monetary affairs, and populist movements have criticized technocracies in recent times. It's been observed that the change of public perception towards central bank independence might put it at risk. Therefore, the discussion about legitimacy, accountability and transparency is ever more relevant. I also second that the European Parliament should have a formally enhanced role and not simply consultative in the appointment procedure of the ECB President and other members of the ECB Executive Board. Next and last slide. In terms of transparency, the ECB has endeavored over the years, as Monsieur Trichet explained, to expand the information it discloses, notwithstanding the critique that it does not publish the minutes. The monetary policy accounts introduced in 2015 do not report how individual members of the Governing Council vote to put names to comments made by individuals, but we should remember that Article 10.4 of the ECB statute, which is primary law, prescribes that only the outcome can be published, but not the minutes. Furthermore, the voting records are not published in order to protect the personal independence of the members of the Governing Council, who could otherwise be subject to undue political pressure from the countries where they come from. For these reasons, as well as the civil tradition of not publishing dissenting opinions to reinforce collegiality, the ECB does not currently publish the minutes, nor the voting records, nor the dissenting opinions. Finally, I also second effective audit control to provide a basis and input for subsequent parliamentary oversight and improved transparency, in line with recent developments in the Bank of England that I discussed in my report. Very many thanks, honorable Chair, members of the European Parliament, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So now we can start our round of Q and A. So with the Econ members, please limit your intervention to two minutes, indicate to whom the question is directed, and do not forget to press the speak button before taking the floor. So now we start. So now we start with the first round. We are taking questions from two Meps and then we will give the floor to the speakers for five minutes for reply. We start with the EPP member, José Manuel García Margallo.
Thank you, Chairman. Monsieur Trichet, si tu es ravi de-
Monsieur Trichet, I'm very pleased to see you here. So let me begin again. Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, good afternoon, Mr. Trichet. I'm very happy to see you again. And I'd like to ask you and Ms. Lastra some questions. Firstly, two details. The central bank is independent, like the Bundesbank, but it's much more independent than the Bundesbank. Firstly, because the statutes of the Bundesbank can be changed rather easily. Changing the European Central Bank statutes is virtually impossible. Secondly, because the Bundesbank has a counterweight in a federal government, which is not the case with the European Central Bank. So my questions are related to the objectives of the bank, the primary objective, the price stability, and then the second objective, the aims of the general economy, which are auxiliary but mixed with the primary objective. And then the outlook for the medium and long term and the short-term outlook and consequences of the ECB's policy, low interest rates and so on. As we all know, the crisis has required the suspension of the rules on deficits and debt. So we're going to have an unknown, previously unknown, level of debt. And so my first question is, if at some point inflation begins to rise again, obviously not immediately, should the ECB raise interest rates at the risk of creating a debt crisis in some member states? Or forget this side of things and follow a traditional policy? Secondly, this is perhaps less easy to answer. It's probable that at some point the debt issued by member states will be so great that markets begin to prioritize and select. So there may be a crisis of differences in risk premiums. Do you think this is likely?
Much. Now I give the floor to Aurora La Louk for S&amp;D for her question.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chairman, colleagues, thank you very much for the speeches we heard. When the ECB was created, there was no political consensus on the issue of climate change. And it's only understandable that the ECB hasn't got these kinds of risks included among its mandate. But with growing scientific knowledge, the EU has tried to reduce its carbon footprint. We now know that climate change is a major systemic risk, particularly with the danger of stranded assets. And colleagues in the US, in the US Fed, have noted the systemic risks of climate change. However, the mandate of the European Central Bank has to be the same missions as the European Union as a whole, or at least be in line with them. So the question is, how is the ECB going to be able to adapt its action to this new reality? First of all, don't you think it's high time we broke with the so-called market neutrality approach and move to a much more active, proactive approach to risk management, looking at leverage and pollution by sector? Can we move towards a real greening of the asset purchase programs and the banks that they supervise? If the ECB doesn't change its mode of action, isn't the ECB going to end up going against the parts of its mandate that are supposed to be for stability and to promote the EU's policy objectives? Because I think if it failed to do that, then it wouldn't be undermining the purpose it was created for.
Very much. Frankly, I'm not sure who should give the floor first because the questions were not directed specifically to one or the other speakers, maybe both. So we, let's start from Jean-Claude Trichet to answer to these questions and then I give the floor to Professor Lastra.
Thank you. I imagine I'm being heard. Just a few words. I think we each have five minutes to answer, or less than five minutes. Five minutes for both, for both. Thank you very much. Firstly, I would say that the accountability of the European Central Bank is actually strongly underlined in the treaties. And it's true that the fact that the independence of the ECB is guaranteed by the treaty strengthens its independence vis-à-vis, in comparison to any other central bank in the world. That's true and strengthens the need for the ECB to be as accountable and responsible as possible. On the two questions that were asked by the first MEP, who I'm very pleased to see again, I would say that obviously the primary mandate of the ECB is to ensure price stability against deflation and inflation. And there's a clear symmetry there. If there's a threat of inflation, obviously the ECB has to take appropriate measures and its monetary policy has to be much less flexible than it can be if the main risk is the risk of deflation. So for me, it's clear that the ECB's monetary policy depends on the exact situation it's in, in terms of price stability. And the second part of that question was on debt. The main problem that we have in Europe, of course, is that we have different countries that are in different situations and the market can take advantage of those differences and different levels of debt, different levels of credibility of the signature of the country in question. And that can create serious problems. Greece, Ireland, Portugal, Spain, even Italy, I had problems there. They were in very difficult situations vis-à-vis investors and savers around the world. A lot depends on the countries themselves. They need to be as responsible as possible. A lot depends on the central bank itself and the institutions that were created since the last crisis. I won't mention them all. But I would imagine that we won't have the same kinds of problems of that kind again as we had, we've had today. To Ms. La Louk, I would say that the European Central Bank is very actively reflecting at the moment on whether to or how to bring in the environment to its approach. And I think it's a very important issue. It has many aspects. But I would encourage people, I would encourage the ECB and, as you suggest, Ms. La Louk, to continue along that path and to ensure there is consistency between correcting climate change, solving climate change, which is key under current circumstances, and should be mainstreamed into all its measures. There isn't only, of course, monetary policy or investment, own resources and prudential rules, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. I intended five minutes for both the guest speakers to answer to both the Meps, but I realize it is really a short time for such complicated questions. Now I give the floor to Professor Lastra.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Let me just answer briefly, given that we have little time. First to Senor Margallo. And the ECB is indeed more independent than the Bundesbank because the treaty is more difficult to amend than the statute. A statute can always be removed by another statute. And also, the ECB does not have, as I mentioned in my presentation, a European fiscal counterpart. One of the issues going forward for the ECB is whether a treaty change is necessary. In the aftermath of the global financial crisis and in these addresses, to some extent, the question posed by Madame La Louk, the objective for financial stability, for instance, in the legislation in the United Kingdom as an objective for the Bank of England, was put on equal footing with the objective of price stability. And the Dole-Frank Act in the US also reinforced the goal of financial stability. To change the treaty, as we know, is more difficult, but it might be necessary going forward to, if we want to have price stability and financial stability on equal footing, to amend the treaty. At the moment, as Monsieur Trichet indicated, the primary objective is price stability, which includes both fighting inflation and deflation. So if it is the case that inflation is going to rise in a post-COVID scenario, there was a recent book by Charles Goodheart and Manoush Pradhan that they argue that it might be the case that inflation will rise, then the primary objective, according to the treaty, is price stability and that is what the ECB will need to do. When it comes to reinforcing the accountability mechanisms of the ECB and looking into the medium to long term, some of the proposals that I suggested do not require a treaty amendment. Others, however, might require a treaty amendment. And again, that's why it is fundamental as we move through further programs of quantitative easing and non-conventional instruments of monetary policy that the European Parliament exercises adequate oversight, adequate scrutiny and adequate accountability. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Now we move to the next two Meps for questions. Billy Keller here from Renew.
It's, you know, the fine line between accountability and independence. And certainly, as those of the last number of years, that would have been always, you know, a political debate because of the fact that the ECB was very involved in the internal fiscal matters of some countries because of the bank bailout that Mr. Trichet referred to in terms of Ireland, Portugal, Spain and elsewhere. But we've now moved on from that. But we now have a significant challenge in terms of, you know, huge sovereign debt because of the global pandemic and the impact that that's having on economies. And I suppose the next question is, you know, how do we guarantee that while the European Central Bank acts independently, but yet is held accountable, and at the same time, we have member states that will have to make very serious decisions in terms of their financial frameworks and borrowings and debt sustainability over the next number of years? And they're doing all that based on the fact that we are in negative interest rates, sovereigns can access markets quite comfortably and the ECB is continually purchasing bonds and is in the market actively underpinning sovereign debt. So the concern obviously would be that, you know, if this policy changes, it could have profound impacts on the sovereigns of countries that are indebted. And if you do look at the debt profile of my countries in the European Union, there is significant challenges there. So the question I ask is, you know, at what stage does the ECB make decisions based on the integrity of the eurozone as a whole? Or do they sometimes have to look at larger countries within the eurozone that may have debt sustainability challenges? And do they always make it in the interest of the eurozone? And finally, can I just ask? Governments, national governments appoint their own central bank people and then they are nominated to the European Central Bank. Is there any concerns with the ECB that in years ahead we could end up with people appointed by national governments that are actually elected because they are hostile to the eurozone and euro currency and therefore could be hostile to the ECB and what it is trying to achieve? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I give the floor to Francesca Donato from ID.
Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you to the speakers. And well, I, of course, I agree that accountability is a crucial issue, especially in this historical moment. And I, of course, agree with the need of more transparency in the EBC role and mandate. And I add to this even regarding the banking supervision role of EBC. And that must be achieved through the enhancing of the role of the EP through the Econ Committee. But I think that to improve EBC accountability needs only a closer connection between its mandate and the EU citizens' interests. And in this moment, ensuring the ECB's independence, when a huge amount of EU national sovereigns' bonds purchased, puts its future monetary policy in a path of necessary consistency with it, means to give to the EBC a wider mandate, a wider scope. And that should be the one of pursuing the full employment. And it would also be necessary to remove the constraints in the treaties to ECB monetary policy, that's to say, that that monetization ban. And so I ask to the speakers, if in your opinion, are these steps a possible way to give concrete substance to the ideals of solidarity and to improve EU citizens' trust in ECB and in other EU institutions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I give back the floor to our guests for answers. Mr. Trichet.
Merci beaucoup. Indeed, for these questions. I would say both questions were quite related. Very rapidly, I would say that the main responsibility of the ECB, it seems to me, in any circumstance, is to ensure price stability at the level of the euro area as a whole and ensure that the monetary policy decisions which are taken at the level of the governing council of the ECB are transmitted to all countries as well as possible. And to understand what has been done by the ECB since the crisis of Lehman Brothers up to now, you can see that the ECB has been extraordinarily attentive to convey monetary policy decisions appropriately, as appropriately as possible, to all countries, including when there were spreads that were accumulating between the signature of various countries. It was not up to the ECB, it seems to me, and it's, I have to say, it is, it was the, I would say, longstanding position of the ECB to judge whether one particular country can be left without having the correct monetary policy transmission. That's the reason why a lot of decisions were taken. The, in my time, the SMP, which was directed towards a number of countries- where monetary policy was impaired, transmission was impaired because there were a lot of spreads in a number of countries. After my own term with Mario de Grandagui, there were other measures that were taken in order to ensure this correct transmission of monetary policy. And I have to say, in a way, the pandemic program of the ECB recently is also sufficiently flexible to pave the way for the appropriate transmission of monetary policy to all the euro area. So again, this, of course, is the responsibility of the ECB, but it calls also for highly responsible attitude from all other partners, certainly the national governments, the national parliaments, which have a major responsibility in their own creditworthiness, and of course, the Commission under the scrutiny, if I may, of the European Parliament. As regards the so-called monetization monetization of the public debt, which is something which is observed in Japan, is not observed, I would say, but you have a large number of treasuries in the balance sheet of the Japanese Central Bank, of the US Central Bank, even more than in the ECB balance sheet. But the main issue is that this so-called accumulation or piling up of outstanding treasuries is not done on purpose to help governments. It is done for monetary policy reasons. And when the monetary policy reasons will not be there anymore, and I hope, of course, that we will see that because appropriate decision will be taken and structural reforms will be taken by all the other partners other than central banks, when it comes, then progressively, it is my working assumption, we will see the diminishing of these outstanding treasuries in the balance sheet of central banks in Japan, as well as in the US, as well as in Europe. And I hope very much that we will have a smooth transition to something which would be more normal because it's not normal to have this piling up of outstanding treasuries in the present period. And again, it's not a European problem, it's a global problem.
Thank you very much. Professor Lastra.
Thank you very much for these very interesting questions. When it comes to fighting crises such as the pandemic or the global financial crisis, clearly, the ECB needs to act with the other authorities at the European level and not sometimes too much is expected of the ECB. So I think it's important to first take that into account. The ECB has done everything that it can to fight economic and financial risks that have arisen from both the global financial crisis and its effect on the eurozone and the pandemic. But it's not only the responsibility of the ECB. The point of the independence, I think, is fundamental. The national governors, as well as the members of the governing council, should be independent, and that is one of the basic tenets that sustain the credibility of the European Central Bank. So that, I think, is something that needs to be preserved going forward. There is always a balance between independence and accountability. It's like freedom and responsibility. And in this balancing act, when the European Central Bank is exercising greater or extraordinary powers, there also needs to be corresponding mechanisms of enhanced accountability. The distributional effects of monetary policy, such as QE, are an important element, which again requires adequate parliamentary oversight. And I'm glad that you mentioned solidarity is indeed one of the broader objectives, solidarity and sustainability, to which Article III of the Treaty for the European Union refers to, and therefore is part of the secondary objective of the ECB. In the medium to longer term, the ECB needs to take into account the economic and financial risks which arise from both unsustainable activity as well as the social dimension of solidarity. So I'm glad that you mentioned that in your question because I think that in the balancing between the primary and the secondary objective, when the European Parliament subjects the ECB to account, they need to take into consideration the broader objectives which are reflected in Article III of the Treaty for the European Union and at the same time, consider the impact of those broader objectives, such as climate change, on what is actually the mandate of the ECB with regard to price stability as well as the contribution to financial stability. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now we move on to the next two maps. We start with Sven Giegold from the Greens.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Professor Lastra and Jean-Claude. It's great to see you again, and it's a pity that we can't meet in person. And it has been indeed far too long time. Look, the trigger for this hearing clearly was the judgment of the Constitutional Court in Karlsruhe, Germany, which marked, of course, a clear signal towards limits of the ECB, in their view, under the German constitution. And also, Professor Lastra made a remark in this regard. Therefore, I'm asking the two of you, do you think that the judgment, which is on the one hand targeted to the PSPP program, but also has indirect consequences and dangers towards the ongoing PEP project and PEP program, is an overstepping of the constitutional European order? Do you think it is needed to take action in this case against Germany in order to ensure that accountability towards this parliament is respected, but most importantly, that it is ensured that it is the European Court of Justice who is responsible for controlling the legality of actions of the ECB and no one else? And I would really like your frank and open assessment whether it would be justified and necessary or necessary for the European Commission to take action in the sense of infringements? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I give the floor. We have three speakers now together. To Johan van Overfeldt from ECR. Monsieur van Overfeldt, can you place the speak button, please?
Okay. You hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thank you also certainly President Trichet and Professor Lastra for your introduction and for the answers you gave to the questions that have been raised so far. I have two questions for President Trichet. The first is regarding the following. Should national parliaments be involved in the monetary dialogue? And related to this question, the question whether we should national central bank governors also get involved in the monetary dialogue hearings, for example, when certain issues pertaining to particular member states are at hand? That's my first question. My second question is somewhat broader, but since we are also discussing the impact of ECB policies on the euro area, this question or this argument is the following. We've seen now extraordinary monetary policies for years now, mostly because the ECB tries to get to its 2% or close to 2% inflation target. It is clearly very, very difficult for the ECB to get to that objective, if not almost impossible at this point in time, probably because there are determinants of inflation that are entirely outside of the realm of the European Central Bank. So my question or my remark is quite simple. Hasn't it become time for the ECB to seriously reflect on the sustainability of its 2% inflation target as the ultimate policy objective? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Actually, we only had two members to ask questions. So now I give back the floor to President Trichet and then to Professor Lastra for the replies.
Merci beaucoup. Thank you very much for this question. On to Sven Giegold. I would say, I really consider that it is clear that the Karlsruhe judgment is not, frankly speaking, compatible with the organization, the legal organization of Europe. Fancy what would happen if all Constitutional Court in all member countries of the euro area would ask for such clarification, modification, changes, and so forth. So this is something which is obviously profoundly abnormal. The ECB is a European institution, accountable to European authorities, and it's clear for me that the European Court of Justice is the only institution which has a say on these matters, clearly. That being said, I consider that the way the German government, the German parliament in connection with the Bundesbank, I would say, dealt with this issue, which was really very, very grave, was as correct as possible in the circumstances. But again, bottom line, this is not possible because we cannot have all Constitutional Court embarking on criticizing ex post the decision of the ECB. I hope I was as clear as possible. As regards Mr. van Overfeldt, I would say that the national parliaments have their own way of understanding what's going on because we are in a federal system and the national central banks, normally in most of the countries, to my knowledge, if not in all countries, are in connection with their own parliaments. And you know that it is certainly the case in the Bundesbank, in the Banque de France, in Banca d'Italia, in all the central banks, national central banks, there is a connection with the European Parliament, and the national central bank can explain how it sees, I would say, the decision of the governing council. I don't trust that it would be appropriate to mix up the national parliaments with the European parliaments and the ECB with the national central banks. As I already said in my introductory remarks, it would be better, in my opinion, to have a division of labor, which again could be perhaps appropriately transgressed if by courtesy it appears that a court's dialogue at a moment or another is appropriate. But normally, no, I would say, strict separation because there is a national level, there is the European level. And it seems to me, in this respect, I take it that, of course, the European Parliament has something which is unique in Europe. As regards the 2% definition of price stability, only to mention that the Central Bank of the United States reflected on its strategic review and after long and due discussion and meditation, they decided to maintain the 2%. The Bank of Japan has the 2%. To my knowledge and under the control of Professor Lastra, the Bank of England has also a reference to 2%. So it seems to me that there is something stronger than is generally perceived behind the 2% which, by the way, we were more or less in the ECB the first to communicate 2% as a figure, as something important. But now there is a consensus of all major central banks of the advanced economy to consider that it's an appropriate reference. So that being said, the ECB is reflecting presently, to my knowledge, on how to define exactly, not the 2%, I hope that they will maintain the 2% and not detach themselves from Japan, from the US, from the UK, but that they will see exactly how do you envisage core inflation or HICP, the headline inflation, whether you reason medium, long term, more than was done in the past, and so forth. So there are a lot of important issues that have to be examined, discussed, of course, as has been promised by the ECB with the Econ. And it seems to me that it is a matter for further discussion that are very important. And as far as the importance of this issue, I fully share the view of Mr. van Overfeldt. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So we have finished our round. Oh, Professor Lastra, I'm sorry. I apologize. I was looking at the watch. Sorry, Professor Lastra.
Thank you very much for giving me the floor again. And first, I will speak to the question that was put by Sven Giegold. And the ECB is clearly subject only to the judicial review by the Court of Justice of the European Union. The Court of Justice of the European Union is the only one that can judge the legality of the acts and decisions of the ECB, and this is established by the treaty itself. Article 263 of the Treaty for the Functioning of the European Union and Article 35 of the Statute of the ESB clearly say that the only court that is competent to judge the actions and decisions of the ECB is the Court of Justice of the European Union. So the decision of the German Constitutional Court, I have great respect for that court and their judges, is something which is not certainly binding regarding the PSPP upon either the ECB or really the national central banks, which in the competences that have been transferred from the national to the supranational arena and monetary policy is clearly one matter of exclusive competence, EU law has primacy over national law under rulings of the European Court of Justice or binding on all national courts. To me, that's a very important part of this European locus of accountability. Also, as I said before, it is the European Parliament the adequate locus when it comes to parliamentary control. I will not enter into the question on infringement proceedings that has been mentioned. I will just reiterate that it is important to understand the adequate locus of accountability and judicial review, which is clearly European. With regard to the target of 2%, just briefly, what the treaty refers to is price stability, that was interpreted as 2% increase per annum, that could be changed in future. In the years that preceded the crisis, many people argue that inadequate attention to the risks of financial stability contributed to the global financial crisis and that these days, central banks, and the ECB should be no exception, should pay increasing attention to risks that arise for financial stability. And therefore, that, you know, going forward, in the review that the ECB does of its own mandate, it is this balancing act between the primary and the secondary objective and this balancing act between price stability and financial stability must be taken into account and also must be subject to the oversight of the European Parliament. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I really thank the two speakers, President Trichet, Professor Lastra, for their availability and generosity in responding to all our questions and for the interesting presentations. So I am confident that the Econ members will take your contribution into account in the context of the crisis response and also any future legislative proposals. So thank you again for your precious contribution. And we can now move on to the second panel of our public hearing that concerns the experience with the central bank accountability. in member states and third countries, including the impact of parliaments on their respective national central banks. And in this context, we are very pleased to be able to welcome for this panel Helen Schubert, Head of Foreign Research Division, Austrian National Bank, and Vivienne Schmidt, Jean-Mounet Professor of European Integration at Boston University. As I was saying, the objective of this panel is to discuss the experience with central bank accountability in member states and third countries. And this panel will provide us with a broader perspective on other experiences in order to see how the role and concept of central bank accountability has been interpreted and declined in different jurisdictions and circumstances. Of course, such a debate is mutually very interesting in order to understand the framework in which such delicate and key mandated, enshrined and operationalized. Now, I will immediately start the speakers' round and give the floor to the invited speakers for 10 minutes each, starting with Helen Schubert from the Austrian National Bank.
Thank you, Mrs. Honorable Chair. Thank you to the members. Good afternoon to the members of the European Parliament. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to the honorable members of the econ committee. In my introductory remarks, I will give an overview of accountability arrangements of major central banks and will then make a few remarks on accountability of national central banks in the euro area. My focus will be on the monetary policy aspects of accountability, although I'm well aware that there are other important functions, including prudential supervision as well that are subject to accountability arrangements. But first of all, I should start with the usual disclaimer. The views I'm going to express exclusively my own, they do not necessarily represent those of the Austrian National Bank or the Eurosystem. Central bank independence and accountability are two sides of the same coin. A high degree of independence is an important prerequisite for central banks being capable of fulfilling their mandate. It protects the central bank from being diverted from its mandate, possibly as a result of short-sighted motivations. Accountability, on the other hand, ensures that the mandate is fulfilled. In particular, central banks with far-reaching political goal and operational independence must be held accountable to a high degree. Economists typically refer to procedures of exposed accountability, such as appearances of central bank officials in front of parliamentary committees or reporting requirements. But on top of exposed control, accountability can already be exercised before monetary policy decisions have been taken. Examples are, for instance, procedures of deliberations with central banks about the precise interpretation of the mandate. Another aspect of ex ante accountability relates to the appointment procedures of central bank officials. When comparing the Fed, the Bank of England, the Bank of Japan and the ECB, the ECB stands out with its high degree of independence, which is enshrined in the treaty. The other central banks, which I mentioned, are operationally independent, but their mandate and operational procedures can be changed with new legislation. And that accountability is considered being most advanced in the Bank of England. According to the Bank of International Settlements, the vast majority of central banks is accountable to parliament. As are all of the central banks considered here. The Bank of England, the Bank of Japan also accounted to the government. Appointment procedures, as mentioned in the beginning, are an element of ex ante accountability, but the European Parliament takes an advisory role in the appointment of the ECB executive board members before an appointment is made. The United States and in Japan, however, approval of the respective parliaments has to be obtained before the appointment of the members of the board become effective. Procedures of the central bank performance control, so the compliance with the mandate, are the heart of central bank exposed accountability. And the more specifically defined the goals are, the more effectively can exposed accountability be assessed. But for the Bank of England, the Bank of Japan and the ECB, price stability is the only or main monetary policy objective. The Fed also pursues the objective to promote maximum employment, which is in no way subordinate to the price stability mandate. And the Bank of England stands out in that the Treasury has the authority over the definition of the price stability in quantitative terms. In the case of the ECB, the Fed and the Bank of Japan, the definition of the details of the price stability objective is the authority of the respective central banks. Accountability vis-à-vis the parliaments is typically exercised via written reports and parliamentary hearings. Similar to the monetary dialogue held between the European Parliament and ECB, a dialogue also takes place between the Bank of England's members of the Monetary Policy Committee and the House of Commons Treasury Select Committee, which has statutory authority to scrutinize the Bank of England. The Fed chair appears twice a year before the US Congress, once in front of the Committee on Bank and Financial Services of the House of Representatives and once in front of the Committee on Housing, Banking and Urban Affairs of the Senate. In the case of Japan, the governor and other members of the policy board appear twice a year in front of each of the chambers of the dire monetary policy matters. At the back of unconventional monetary policy measures, central banks worldwide have stepped up their efforts in strengthening accountability. And over the years, they converged in their communication with respect to monetary policy decisions. Over the years, in the meanwhile, all of the central banks hold a press conference immediately after they have taken monetary policy decisions. And just to mention, the ECB was a pioneer in establishing from day one monthly press conferences immediately following the governing council meetings. The Federal Reserve only adopted this practice in 2010, 11. Moreover, the Fed, the Bank of Japan and the Bank of England publish minutes, including voting records. And in 2015, the ECB started to publish the accounts of monetary policy meetings that include a summary of the discussions in an unattributed form. Now let me make a few remarks on accountability of national central banks in economic monetary union. The extent to which national central banks are scrutinized by national parliaments in the euro area hasn't received much attention so far. Even after the transfer of monetary sovereignty to the supranational level, euro area national central banks have continued to manage a wide range of responsibilities. But there are a range of legal accountability requirements. With the exception of a few central banks, all euro area national banks are required to report to their parliaments. Some of them may be heard by parliament at the request of committees, while for others, almost half of them, hearings are compulsory. And even if formally not obliged to do so, some central bank officials attend hearings fairly regularly and submit written evidence. But let me make a few remarks on the more broader question. As already mentioned in the first session, with regard to monetary policy, the locus of ECB accountability is at the European and not at the national level. Governors of national central banks do not represent their respective countries but the interests of the euro area when they attend governing council meetings. National central banks, this is my second remark, could probably play a more crucial role in shoring up trust in the Eurosystem and ensuring that ECB decisions are accepted by audience beyond financial markets. Ideally, in the future, national central banks may not only translate ECB governing council decisions for different national audiences and thereby complementing the ECB communication. This particular communication channel might also work in the opposite direction. National central banks could and probably should more often listen to stakeholders and citizens at large. Third comment, this form of accountability, which contains both exposed and ex ante elements of accountability, is not only important from the perspective of democratic legitimacy. There is compelling empirical evidence suggesting that increased clarity about central banks mandates, their action functions and inflation aims has contributed to anchor inflation expectations and to reduce the variability around the communicated inflation aim. Only if the public and investors understand the goals of monetary policy are inflation expectations more likely to remain well anchored. And without doubt, financial markets and banks, by implementing changes in financial conditions, play decisive role in transmitting bank policies and signals to the real economy. But households and firms are important as well. In particular, in view of cross-country differences in wage and price setting, a credible nominating anchor may act as a coordinating device. Fourth comment, despite unprecedented circumstances, the ECB was successful in delivering financial monetary conditions that are exceptionally supportive of the real economy. So why has inflation remained low? One of the reasons for this phenomenon could be the secular decline in wage bargaining power that contributed to a significant part of recent productivity gains no longer being distributed to labor. This had adverse consequences for real disposable income, consumption growth and ultimately inflation. And strengthening the dialogue with social partners, those that are directly involved in the wage setting process, as suggested by some stakeholders, a kind of macroeconomic dialogue at the national level, might be an idea worth discussing. And here I would like to mention that before Austria joined European Monetary Union, incomes and monetary policies were loosely interacting to support the credibility of the exchange rate target vis-à-vis the Deutschmark and avoid...
So Schubert, do you want to push the speak button again, please?
Yes, hello. Could you hear me? I'm sorry.
It's okay. Go on.
It's okay. Go on. It's okay.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I thank you very much for your attention. I hope you heard everything. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. Now I give the floor to the second speaker, Vivienne Schmidt, Jean-Mounet Professor of European Integration at Boston University. Professor Schmidt, you have the floor for 10 minutes.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for inviting me to speak to the econ committee on this very important topic. So my focus is on the ECB accountability in comparative perspective. As the most independent of central banks, the ECB by mandate has actually comparatively less accountability than most other central or all other central banks. Now, to define accountability, I see it as officials giving account and being held to account in relevant public forums. By this definition, the ECB certainly has increased its accountability over the past decade after what I see as some serious lapses in the early phase of the eurozone crisis. The question today is how to ensure greater accountability for the ECB in the future, in particular in light of major changes related to the COVID-19 pandemic. For this, I provide a comparative perspective, not only on the question of accountability to whom, i.e. in which forms of accountability, but also accountability for what, meaning the objectives of the ECB and their impact. I end with recommendations for democratizing the ECB accountability via what I'm calling a great macroeconomic dialogue to ensure public deliberation on grand strategies for future growth. So to begin, central banks' accountability to whom? This can best be understood as central banks giving account and being held to account for their actions in two kinds of forums. The first is political, the one that we've been talking about all this time, made up of legislative bodies engaged in parliamentary oversight. But the second is technical, expert forums, central banking forums, to ensure best practices for optimal performance. So first, accountability in political forums. National central banks' accountability in political forums can be characterized as operating in the shadow of politics. Although these are all independent bodies, they are appointed by the legislature in combination with the executive. They also have an obligation, as we've already heard before, to report regularly to parliamentary monitoring committees, to explain their actions, but also importantly, to be subject to formal sanctions if need be. Over time, such discursive accountability, which are the words of Paul Tucker, former deputy governor of the Bank of England, such discursive accountability has become more robust in legislative forums as well as to the public. So for the ECB, accountability to public forums is weaker. It's not just more independent than all other national central banks. It also operates much less in the shadow of politics. It's farther removed from politics for a range of reasons that you all know. By mandate, it has less formal political accountability. The European Parliament does not have a role, a major role, in appointments. The ECB president has to explain certainly and respond to questions in quarterly meetings. But the ECB president need not heed the European Parliament's advice, nor can the European Parliament sanction the ECB. And as we've already heard, there are issues in terms of ECB transparency. Nonetheless, and I think this is of course very important, the ECB has increasingly shown discursive accountability. And it has also increasingly been operating in the shadow of EU politics. It has sought not just to listen but to hear European parliamentary concerns, in particular from this committee. It's used the European parliamentary hearings as an important tool to bolster its own accountability, not only to the European Parliament but to the public at large, as well as in other, not only in the EP but in other venues and through speeches, as amplified by the media. You know, we can mention as well that Lagarde has launched the ECB listens as a more direct public forum. I think the key here is it is not just a publicity tool that the ECB really listens and hears. Note, I note that the ECB's political accountability improved significantly once it moved away from a discursive focus on credibility in the early years of the presidency of Jean-Claude Trichet, who sought, as well as his predecessor, to avoid even the hint of responsiveness to political influence. We've seen a shift under President Draghi, who increasingly engaged in informal consultation with EU political actors while maintaining the independence of the ECB, of course. I guess the question for the ECB as an independent actor is how far it should go in terms of informal political engagement? And also, how far is too far with regard to independent political action? Certainly, President Trichet's secret letters to the prime ministers of Greece, Ireland, Spain and Italy, threatening to pull the plug on their economies if they did not follow prescribed sets of austerity and structural reform measures, was a political overstretch and outside the bounds of accountability. We can understand the circumstances under which this happened, but certainly in terms of accountability and transparency, this was highly problematic. Now, accountability in technical forums is another aspect of accountability that is often not thought of, but it serves to a dual purpose. Such accountability in technical forums is really about facilitating central bankers' exchange of information on the latest banking principles, technical innovations and econometric models. That's one. And two, it enables central bankers to use such information to persuade internal stakeholders, here we're talking governing board members, of the necessity and appropriateness of shifting bank policies and priorities. We certainly saw this during the 2008 financial crisis. And more recently, we're seeing ongoing dialogue in terms of ideas about macro prudential regulation. We're seeing it in debates about increasing central banking activism everywhere to address climate change, for example via green bonds or non-neutral bond buying. We see it in terms of debates about how to deal with inequality, including, although this will never happen, deploying helicopter money. Maybe it will, we'll see. But anyway, there's also about the current pandemic emergency responses. Now, it's important to say that although the ECB is always engaged in such technical accountability forums, in the eurozone crisis, it was initially unwilling or unable, legal reasons of course, to listen or act in accordance with emerging best practices, while the Fed and the Bank of England engage in quantitative easing from the onset of the... From the onset of the 2008 financial crisis forward, the ECB introduced quantitative easing only in 2015. We can explain the ECB’s slowness certainly in terms of legal concerns and internal divisions on what to do, but we could also explain the sort of the slow reinterpretation of its rules and its incremental shift is arguably about its persuasive engagement with these technical accountability forums and their ideas. In short, being part of technical accountability forums means that the ECB has been learning and legitimating itself in terms of best practices. Being part of political accountability forums is about the ECB being held to account for its practices in the best interests of the polity. But once we mention the best interests of the policy, what do we mean? And this takes us to questions of to whom the ECB is accountable, not only from to whom the ECB is accountable, to for what purposes. So this is central banks’ accountability for what. And part of the problem for the ECB in particular, as we’ve just been hearing, is its accountability for what, that its primary objective is price stability and its secondary objective only is to support general economic policies of the EU, employment, growth, the quality of the environment, sustainability, and solidarity. Central banks like the US Fed or the Bank of England have both such objectives largely aligned. But here too, we should add that the ECB has changed over time. In the past, it had a very restrictive reading of its mandate focused on its primary objective, but what we’ve seen is slowly but truly, the ECB’s secondary objective has come close to being on a par. It’s not said, but it’s certainly done, certainly looking at the pandemic emergency purchase program. And this is even if it’s not verbalized much in the public discourse, it’s clearly more and more relevant. And this naturally, and importantly, matches the best practices of technical accountability forums. The challenge for the ECB is therefore how to define those secondary objectives and legitimize them in a politically accountable manner. Given the more active monetary policy expected today of the ECB than in the past, do we simply leave the ECB to decide yet again about what to do without any political guidance? Is its discursive accountability to the European Parliament sufficient? And what we can say is in its response to the pandemic, the ECB played an important role in saving the Eurozone economy, ensuring this time around that all member states were protected as needed immediately. But what if it had not? What if it had waited longer or remained with the unfortunate initial reaction of President Lagarde, who had said it was not its job to deal with the spreads between German and Italian bonds? Who or what would hold it to account? Or better, which body now could have pushed it to support the objective, the secondary objective, about the general economic policies of the EU effectively? You know, this is the question. There really isn’t any. So going forward, the question is, how is the ECB to decide what to do and to whom to legitimize it, in particular with these secondary objectives? So what is the future of ECB accountability? So just to sum up before I go on to where I’m going to recommend, it seems to me that the ECB increased its accountability from an actor focused mainly on credibility to and its independence from politics to one actively seeking to build accountability via forums of political oversight, the European Parliament, and forums of technical expertise, but also through informal consultations with political actors in the council, plus its communication to the form of public opinion. But is this enough? I think the ECB’s narrow primary objective is no longer a useful guide, while the secondary objective of supporting EU’s economy is so vast and vague. In short, the final question is, without undermining ECB autonomy, who or what can provide political guidance to ensure ECB accountability? Many different possible answers, and many involve pitfalls. Changing the treaties to make the secondary objective co-equal with the primary, a great idea, but perilous given the problems, and maybe not necessary, since everyone recognizes that the secondary objective is key and the primary one moot. Do we create another accountability forum, such as the Eurogroup? No. It won’t guarantee the EU’s best interests, and remember their role in the Troika. What about increasing the powers of the European Parliament? Going from monetary dialogue to monetary hearings, that’s Professor Laster’s idea, very good. The EP still is missing formal sanctions, but those wouldn’t actually address our problems in terms of the question of guidance. Although we could, one could argue that the EP could begin to provide outlines of priorities and secondary objectives, but better yet, it seems to me that we could create a new venue for democratic debate and deliberation on EU macroeconomic governance. Let’s call it the Great Macroeconomic Dialogue, as a yearly conference to outline grand economic strategies for the coming year. This should be a space for the ECB to engage with other EU-level actors on economic policymaking, not just ministers of finance or relevant commission officials, but also representatives of industry, labor, civil society, and of course, the European Parliament is key and essential in all of this. And my sense is it shouldn’t be focused on the ECB’s monetary policy per se. It should...
Ms. Schubert, do you want to push the speak button again, please?
He’s back, okay.
Can you hear me now?
It’s okay.
Okay, great, yeah. So I’m just, my final words, now that stability and growth is no longer operative, with the governing by the ruling powers in the Eurozone essentially suspended, not reformed yet, this is the moment for a new, more yearly dialogue to set the direction for economic policy in the Eurozone and the EU more generally. Is ECB more accountable? EU economic policymaking more transparent, as well as more democratically legitimate and effective? Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the interesting presentations. Now we have our Q&amp;A session. We have three requests for questions, so we will take all three of them together and then we will give the floor to the guest speakers for answers. We start with Billy Kelleher from Renew.
Billy Kelleher, you have the floor. Can you push the speak button? Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me? Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I’d like to thank the panelists for their views and observations. And again, I think because we live in a democratic process in terms of having national governments, national parliaments, the European Council, European elections, at times, people may argue that the European Central Bank is an institution that plays a profound role in people’s lives because of the monetary policy they pursue, and at the same time, there’s not much known about it. Unless and until there is an economic crisis or a major issue that brings the individuals on the governing body or the president of the ECB to national prominence, just like Jean-Claude Trichet would have been very well-known in Ireland for a number of years because of the economic crisis in 2008, 1911. But beyond that, on an ordinary everyday workings, is there not a role for the national central banks to explain the decisions of the European Central Bank? So that is not just an abstract institution in Frankfurt, that is an institution that has not just accountability to the European Parliament, but its decisions can be explained to national parliaments or to national finance committees by the national central banks. And I’m just wondering, is there a role in that? And equally, I asked the previous speakers, but I’d like to ask as well, is there any concerns that because of the way that the central bank members are appointed, effectively, governments appoint the central banks at the national level, and then the president of the central bank then is appointed to the European Central Bank? And is there not an inherent danger with that system, that you could end up with many people because of political changes in member states that could be hostile to the European Union concept around the euro? So in other words, a government campaigns on being anti-Eurozone, anti-European, gets elected, nominates a member to the central bank, the national central bank, and subsequently that person then is nominated to European Central Bank? And is that not an inherent potential systemic risk? Bear in mind, you know, you do have countries that have anti-Europe and anti-Euro sentiment. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. The next question is from Stasys Yakelounas from the Greens.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair and the speakers, the panelists. I come from a relatively new member state, and member states have very heterogeneous situations as far as the central banks are concerned. Some of them are monetary policy institutions or whatever is left of the monetary policy at the national level, but some of them, including my own central bank or our own central bank in Lithuania, is responsible for prudential supervision, also business conduct supervision, that means consumer protection. And I will quote two cases, two examples, which I think is sort of an anomaly for my understanding, and probably abuse of the independent status of the central bank. One of them was the reaction of the central bank governor when the parliamentary crisis inquiry into the previous crisis was initiated, and I was heading that inquiry. The comments circulated within the central bank departments and the board members was that, by the governor, and they quote, “This is the most senseless work,” end of quote. The second case was when Brexit started to develop into some sort of a reality, there was starting some sort of supervisory competition, and the same central bank, by witness of one of the fintech companies, when was asked why it chose Lithuania for licensing purposes, the answer came that it was invited by the central bank with all the mandates. So what do you think of these situations, and what can be done at the European level to reduce this heterogeneity and also to harmonize the code of ethics of the national central banks? Would you have any recommendations? I don’t want any other cases, but I was deeply involved in these two situations, and it doesn’t seem normal to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now I give the floor to the third speaker, Evelyn Regner from S&amp;D.
She doesn’t have a good connection. Fresh air connection, one moment, please. You should go to the next speaker, we’ll see what we can do for Mrs. Regner.
Okay, Mrs. Regner is trying to reconnect, so in the meantime, I would give the floor to the guest speakers to reply to these two questions that we just heard. We can start from Mrs. Schubert.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. I’d probably start with the first question on the role of national central banks in better communicating governing council decisions to the audience. I commented on this in my introductory statement, and I just, I think this is of eminent importance, in particular at the back of the distributional consequences of monetary policies and the complexity in general of unconventional monetary policies. And I’d just like to mention that the national central banks of the Euro system, national central banks, were engaging in outreach events with the broader, with the stakeholders, and I think this should be a more permanent process.
Ms. Schubert, can you press the speak button, please, again? Thank you. Mrs. Schubert, can you please press the speak button? You have the floor. Thank you.
Okay, so we can now try to give the floor to Professor Schmid while we try to reconnect with Mrs. Schubert.
So first, I will answer the first question, and thank you for that. I think it’s tremendously important to have as much communication as possible, there’s no question about that. And I think the national central banks can play a major role in explaining what the ECB does, but it’s actually important to recognize that sometimes the central bankers, heads of the central banks, don’t necessarily agree entirely with the ECB. You know, we can take just one example, which is the Bundesbank, that was a dissident of voice in, at many moments in the past decade, and certainly it joined the German Constitutional Court cases. So yes, it’s important for the national banks to speak, national central bankers to speak, but it’s equally and possibly more important that the ECB continues to have a clear voice, not simply at the EU level, but also responding to issues at the national level, so that it should be present everywhere. And actually, if you look at ECB central bankers, those on the governing board, they are engaged in speaking all over the place, and often they speak to their national constituencies as well as to other constituencies. So communication is tremendously important, but the ECB continues to need to play a major role in ensuring that the ECB has a voice and that people begin to understand better. I think that Lagarde’s, the ECB listens, is a very good idea to bring in stakeholders, civil society if you will, and citizens into the process as well, and what would be useful is to ensure that we see this everywhere. The second question about the appointment of the central bank and central bankers and the problem, this is definitely a problem. In particular, what we’ve seen is the rise of populist antisystem parties gaining power, and there is always a fear that that would be a problem. This could conceivably mean that the central bank itself should be given more powers to vet the central banking appointment prior to agreeing to it. I’m not quite sure how you do that. The lawyers here can tell us if you do. The lawyers here can tell us if you'd need a treaty amendment for that or a change in the mandate. But certainly, that way would be one way to do it. But another way, and I think this is important to recognize, is the ECB has lots of members and they can outvote dissident members. If you just think that over time, at the beginning of the Eurozone crisis, the Bundesbank had a blocking or a majority coalition. Slowly but surely, over time, the Bundesbank found it isolated in terms of its positions. This is also, when I was talking about the role of technical accountability forums, it seems to me that really what you saw was ECB governors, Draghi in particular, bringing in expertise from outside to say, "We need to rethink these rules. Otherwise, how can we explain?" That the Bundesbank was increasingly isolated. This is one example, but what one could argue is similarly for, even if you end up with eurosceptics sitting on the board, they would conceivably be outvoted or perhaps learn about the discourse of the ECB and how to work it. As for the questions for Lithuania, I'm not an expert on these issues, so I'm not sure that I can say much about this myself. So I should probably leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, I still don't see Mrs. Schubert connected, so she apparently still has problems. But there is Mrs. Regner, and maybe Evelyn wants to ask her question.
Sarah, you have the floor. Can you press the speak button please? Mrs. Regner, can you try to push your speak button again? Thank you.
Okay, I really apologize, but today, unfortunately, we have several connection problems from different parties. So Mrs. Schubert couldn't, still is not able to reconnect. And also, Honorable Regner is experiencing problems. And I see she's trying, but in the meantime, we are over time. And also, we have no more translation available for our event. So I think that we will have to close the hearing here. I am really sorry, but I really thank our guests. This was extremely interesting. Thank you for your work, for your ideas and proposals. We will definitely use and take them into account. These are topics that we address very frequently, as you may imagine, in this committee. So we really value your contribution. And actually, I think and hope that we will be able to see and hopefully meet each other in person sometime soon. So thank you. Thank you very much to all of you. Have a nice day.